I'm Gloria Cohn, and this is City Hall in Focus. Today Jay Walter is here. He's the Director of Public Works for the City of San Carlos. Jay, the City of San Carlos is a member of the National League of Cities. What is that?
Well, that's an organization that's nationwide, and they basically look out for the interests of cities all over the country, advocating and looking for opportunities.
And you bring that up because it's important to know that they're looking out for municipalities. But there's something specific you want to talk about as it relates to homeowners and sewer lines that come into the house, right?
That's right. The National League of Cities has partnered with a company called Utility Service Partners. And what they're offering to residents of the city is a warranty program for sewer lines, water lines, and in-home plumbing lines that can help pay for some very costly repairs.
So what you're saying is that homeowners are responsible for these lines that come into our house? We're responsible for maintaining them, repairing them?
That's right. In the City of San Carlos, the sewer lines and the water lines are the property owner's responsibility. And so if you can provide an opportunity for some insurance coverage, then it may not be such a big hit to the pocketbook if they have a problem with one of those lines.
Well, just, I don't know if you know the answer to this, but I'm just wondering how many people are aware of that?
Well, nobody at this point in time that we're aware of, because property owners will have a problem with their sewer line or their water line, they'll call for help and realize that they have a huge out-of-pocket expense they've got to take care of.
So Utility Services Partner is the name of the firm?
That's right.
And this is like an insurance policy for homeowners?
It is. And it's, as far as we can tell, a very affordable insurance policy to take care of those repairs.
How do we get involved with this program as homeowners?
Well, the city has chosen to participate with the National League of Cities and partner with Utility Service Partners. And what's going to happen is there's going to be a letter that'll go out to residents. It'll inform them of the program, what the options are, what the costs are, and how they can sign up.
And how will you let the homeowners know then?
Well, that's the letter that'll come directly from Utility Service Partners.
Okay, so it's not going to be junk mail, right? So we need to, we need to watch out for that as we get those letters.
That's right. And it will have a city seal, and it'll be signed by a city official as well as Utility Service Partners. So residents can be comforted in the fact that this is a city sanctioned program, although it's not funded by the city.
All right. So then the unfortunate thing happens. My sewer line breaks. What's the first thing I need to do?
Well, if you're a covered homeowner, then Utility Service Partners provides a phone number that you can call 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, weekends and holidays. And they will put you in touch with a local plumbing contractor who will be on scene within a couple of hours. They'll assess the problem, and then they'll make the repair.
How much will this cost?
Well, the options now range from about $6 to $9 per month. And that's giving the homeowner a choice. They can look to enroll with the sewer line, water line, or in-home plumbing repairs altogether, or only one of them if they choose. And the range of coverage, it could be as much as about $8,500 for the type of repair that may be needed.
If we opt into this program, and let me ask, can we opt in anytime?
You can opt in anytime after the program becomes available.
All right. When we opt into this program, and I pay the $6 to $9 a month, whatever it is, something happens, they come out, there will be no additional cost to the homeowner?
That's right. No deductibles, no out-of-pocket expense. Now, there are limits on what the coverages are, and that's clearly specified in the information that's provided to the homeowner. But they base it on what the typical repair cost would be. Now, if it's something very complex, then there might be some additional cost to a homeowner. But generally, it'll be covered by what they're providing.
Do you know how many lines are coming into any particular home or the average home?
Well, every home has a water line and a sewer line that enter the house along the property from the street. And then every home also has water lines and plumbing lines inside the house, upstairs, downstairs, and throughout.
So the ones specifically from the outside inside is what the USP, UPS, USP?
USP.
USP, thanks, will be covering?
That's right. But also, the homeowner can choose to have an option to cover the plumbing inside the house, which is a big advantage, because a lot of times, a repair that's needed, you may see it quite clearly outside the house on your property. But if you have a problem that's happening within your walls or below your floor, you may not see it for a long time. And by then, you may have had a lot of damage that would have come from water or the waste.
I pause order the January 11th, 2021, City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency Housing Authority Regular Meeting. Would you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge of allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the order of the agenda this evening?
Nothing from staff this evening, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Anything from council?
For me.
All right, all right. So hearing none, I just have a few opening remarks, and then we'll move to public comments. So I just wanted to share with you that I join the vast majority of Americans in condemning the events of January 6 and offer my condolences to the families of the victims. The lies that incited the terrorists, threatened, and still threaten the foundation of our democracy. But our system stood strong as so many of our representatives acted honorably and courageously. We will recover from these heinous acts. Justice will be served, lessons will be learned, and the peaceful transition of power will provide an opportunity to join together in the continued pursuit of our more perfect union. Thank you. All right. At this time, I'd like to move us to Agenda Item 4, Public Comments. Persons wishing to address the City Council on matters not on the posted agenda may do so. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. If the item you are speaking on is not listed on the agenda, please be advised that the City Council may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed under the Brown Act, Government Code Section 54954.2. The City Council's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future City Council agenda for more comprehensive action or report in formal public discussion and input at that time. Crystal, do we have anybody wishing to speak this evening?
Yes, it looks like we do have one speaker, Sonia Elks. You should be able to unmute yourself at this time.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, thank you, Sonia.
Excellent. Yes, good evening. This is Sonia, resident of San Carlos, bike pedestrian safety, sustainable transportation advocate. I wanted to give an update to let you know what we're working on right now. Sustainable transportation advocates are working with safer routes to school heavily, partly to get the sidewalks fixed between Arroyo School and Burton Park on the north side of Arroyo, so that scooters, strollers, wheelchairs, et cetera can get through more safely. We're also working to create a GoFundMe account in our community to raise funds for a modular pump truck, which is a ride-on track that all ages, stages, abilities, and wheel types can use. It encourages active transportation among students, and most importantly, it helps facilitate safer routes to school educational programming. And finally, I am, we are asking, sustainable transportation advocates are asking City Councils to put youth recreation facilities high on your priority list when you meet Thursday for your annual organizational retreat. We may not be able to open our schools fully yet, but we can open our streets, for example, to better accommodate youth, family, exercise. Race of youth, obesity, anxiety, depression, and suicide are alarmingly rapidly rising with this prolonged pandemic, the uncertainty around the vaccine, et cetera. And we urge you to consider changes in San Carlos that would promote more recreational youth facilities in a pandemic linked directly to air pollution. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonia. Crystal, are there any other members of the public who wish to speak?
No, I'm not seeing any at this time.
Okay, thank you. All right. So with that, we'll move to Agenda Item 5, the Consent Calendar. Do we have any council members who wish to pull an item from the consent calendar?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull Item 5I.
5I, okay. And then I need to pull 5J. I need to recuse myself from that item since that agenda item takes place near my home, so Sarah will be administering that. Councilmember Rack, is your discussion relative brief on that? Should we take that now, or do you want to hold it till later in the meeting?
Well, I have, I mean, I'm thinking it's sort of a 10-minute item. I have a couple of questions for staff on it, but I don't anticipate it being super long.
Okay, all right. Well, if the council is amenable, if we can go ahead and discuss that now?
Okay. If you want to do it now, or do you want to do it after the, whatever you want. I'm happy to do it now?
Yeah, go for it.
Okay. So I guess, look, I wanted to just sort of understand the process, because we're talking about two separate units, two separate multiple properties here, and sort of the ability of the property owner to pull those units together. And then I wanted to understand, sort of, we're looking at, I think it's September is when this originally went into effect, and it sounds like they've got a year to complete these projects, the work on that. And can you just explain sort of the process around that? Because it sounds like if it's over a year, then we potentially have some recourse around that. So, and then I just had a comment after that, so I don't know who's going to take this one.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Councilmember Stephen Vajiva of a Works Director. So let me answer your first question, your last question first, and this in regards to the subdivision improvement agreement. So that subdivision improvement agreement, yes, they do have 365 days, you know, after the signing of that agreement to kind of complete the work. Now, this work is really only for the off-site improvements. So this would entail the curb gutter, sidewalk, the connections to the sewer, the connections to the water, any other connections, utilities, electrical, cable, that sort of measure. So it's not really related to kind of the onsite improvement. So that would be including some of the grading, the onsite grading, the improvements of the building itself. So they would essentially have, you know, essentially one year after the completion or after the signing of this agreement. Now, one of the struggles, one of the challenges there obviously is if, in fact, they are close to that one-year deadline, if we have them install a lot of those improvements prior to when they're finishing the onsite improvements, in many instances, they could damage, for instance, they could damage the sidewalk or curb gutter with some of their heavier trucks or some of the dumpsters that they may bring onsite. So in some cases, we do give them a little leeway to finish up onsite and then do the off-site work afterwards.
And if they, sort of at the point where they're sort of required to do that, if they do sort of damage after, at that point, it's their responsibility to repair that at that time?
It is always their requirement, yes. If they do any damage before we actually accept those improvements, it would be a requirement that they fix and repair any damage that they did.
Okay. And then I guess the question is, so we're talking about, they have by right, are there no setbacks over there? So they have a right to just have one, sort of one property, basically? Because I think it's like two multiple properties together, is that right?
That is correct. There's two lots.
Okay. And then I guess this is, and this is sort of a question, Stephen, I thank you for that. That helps me on that one. Just for Al, I believe for this one, if he's on, I don't, I don't know if he's there or not. I see him there. So this is a property that I think has like six super, sort of over 2,000 square foot units, right? So there, this is one of these where they, we have a requirement of seven units or more to do affordable housing, and they've sort of done six giant units, and so they're not paying into the Affordable Housing Fund. They're not building any affordable housing units. Is that, is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. And I know this, this is sort of not the first. There's multiple places around town that are doing this. And so it's, I mean, to me, it's disappointing that some of these developers are doing this kind of work. To me, just sort of getting away from doing their, doing the right thing on affordable housing. So I think we were talking about looking at that and what our options were around that at some point. Do you, can you give me just a quick update on whether we're close to getting this, so we kind of avoid this in the future?
Yes. So, yes, you're right, Councilmember Rack, that we intend to bring forward a new below-market rate ordinance for the city. And so in the new year, one of the first steps that we would like to do is, we had an economic analysis performed on our current, our current BMR ordinance. And before I continue, please forgive me, my internet connection is a little spotty right now. But so we did an economic analysis on the current BMR ordinance. And what we'd like to do is talk to the Housing Subcommittee once that committee is established by the mayor, talk to the Housing Subcommittee, go over the analysis and data that we have. And once we've done that, and the committee's okay with that information, or maybe needs to look at some adjustments or provide some guidance, then we would be ready to go to the Planning Commission in the City Council. So I think that we could probably move this forward in the early spring and get it here to the City Council in the early spring, hopefully.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate that. Madam Mayor, that's all I had. I'm happy to move this item if that's the case, if you'd like to, or if you want to. Seems like we have to do it separately now at this point, right?
Well, okay, okay. So Greg, what's the order on this? Do we take this one and then the rest of the items? Or could you guide us here?
You would want to take this item separately, because the other one, you're going to recuse yourself on, the consent calendar.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion for item?
I move Item 5I, Adopt a Resolution Approving the Final Map For The 1040-1052 Laurel Street Development Assessor's Parcel Numbers, APN 051-347-090 and 051-347-100, And Authorizing the City Manager To Execute The Subdivision Improvement Agreement.
I'll second. Crystal, can you call the roll?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Palmer Lohan? I'm sorry, Vice Mayor McDowell? Have it. Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
And Mayor Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. So procedurally, Greg, we didn't?
Then the rest of the consent calendar, now I understand what your question was.
Yes, okay. So I'll entertain the motion. Okay, so if I could take a motion on Items A through H and K and L?
I'll move to approve City Council Consent Calendar Items A Through H and K and L.
Crystal, can you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
And Mayor Palmer Lohan?
Yes. All right. At this time, I'm going to recuse myself from the next item, and Vice Mayor McDowell will administer this. Thank you.
Okay, so moving forward, I will entertain a motion for Item J on the consent calendar.
I move to adopt Item J, 5J, Adopt a Resolution Appropriating $180,000 From the Wastewater Fund, 0006, To The 2020 On-Call Civil Replacement Project, C1712, Authorizing The City Manager To Execute An Amendment To The Public Project Agreement With C2R, Engineering Inc., Authorizing The Expenditure Of A Contingency Not To See The Project Project.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, Crystal, could you please call the roll?
Okay, Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
And Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. All right, reports to council. We'll be receiving an update on the coronavirus. Jeff, is this, is this you today?
This is me. Oh, wait, here we go. Okay, good evening, councils, members of the public. Our COVID report this evening shouldn't contain really too many changes from the report we had in December as our status has remained unchanged as a county. And it's still, health experts are still expecting to see kind of a surge continuing related to the Christmas and New Year holidays, as much as we saw after the Thanksgiving holiday. So as of December 17th, San Mateo County is under a state, regional stay-at-home order. All San Mateo County individuals are currently ordered to stay home except for permitted work, local shopping, or other permitted errands. So keep, keep your travel and leaving your home to minimum remains in effect. The Bay Area Hospital ICU availability is still at an all-time low of 0.7. So there aren't a lot of available beds in the ICU, and that's a critical metric that we need to see improve before businesses and activity can begin to reopen and resume. San Mateo County residents can call 211, which is open 24 hours a day, seven days a week, with non-medical and non-emergency questions about COVID-19 and the regional stay-at-home order. Opening, things that are open with safety precautions, critical infrastructure with remote option is not possible. Schools, non-urgent medical and dental care, childcare, and pre-K. Open with modifications, restaurants offering only takeout or delivery. There is no outdoor or indoor dining at this point. Outdoor recreational facilities are open with proper signage and precautions and modification. Retail and grocery stores at reduced capacity. Retail and grocery stores at reduced capacity, hotels and lodging, outdoor places of worship and political expression continue with modification. Things that are closed, hair salons, barber shops, personal care services, wineries, bars, breweries, distilleries, with the exception for production retail sale for consumption. Museums, family entertainment centers, live audience, sports, card rooms, all non-essential retail businesses have to be closed from ten PM to five AM to reduce movement and the mixing of households. The six hundred block remains open to traffic to accommodate local shopping, takeout, and the regional stay-at-home order. The, I can't actually read what that says. We're going to have to make a modification here. The six hundred block of Laurel Street is now open to traffic seven days a week. And the Sunday closures will resume once the order is lifted. We really appreciate the cooperation that we're getting from our community to wear masks and practice physical distancing when visiting the downtown and our parks and other folk and other points of destination, retail outlets and whatnot in San Carlos. We seem to have a very high rate of compliance, not a lot of issues or calls related to folks not wearing masks in situations where they are required. So we really appreciate that. I think we're, we're, you know, all, you know, very familiar with the trials and tribulations of the mask, but continuing to pull together as a community to do the right thing for ourselves, our family, and the most vulnerable members of our community and population is really a testament to the character and nature of San Carlos residents and our community in general. So on behalf of the city staff and the City Council, we just want to thank you all for your continued cooperation as we hopefully start to see some light at the end of the tunnel here. There are free COVID nineteen testing available for San Mateo County residents and workers. Testing for COVID nineteen is, is one way to help slow the spread and receive early care and protect others. Free testing is available for both adults and children ages five and older. The locations are at the San Mateo County Event Center in Daly City and others listed on the website, which is listed below on this slide, which is www.smcgov.org backslash testing to make an appointment. This is a invitation to an online event to learn more. If you're interested in learning more about the COVID nineteen vaccine, what you need to know, you can join the San Mateo County Health Department on January the thirteenth at eleven thirty AM. And that would be, Tara, you might have to help me out because I don't see where they would do that on this slide.
Okay. They can go to the San Mateo County Health, the same email address that you gave before to, to sign up.
Okay. Thank you. The U.S. Small Business Administration, SBA, reopened the Paycheck Protection Program Loan Portal today and issued new guidance. The program is open for new borrowers and certain existing PPP borrowers. For more information or assistance for small businesses, you can visit one of these two websites here, sba.gov backslash PPP, or treasury.gov backslash cares. And finally, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that the council might have.
Jeff, if you don't mind, Nicole is going to provide more information on the event happening this Wednesday on the thirteenth, how to sign up for that. Okay, she says what I had indicated was correct. You don't want to do the backslash testing. Just go to sanmateo county gov.org. You don't need to do the testing backslash, and that will tell you where you need to go to sign up. Sorry about that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. I think at this point, we take public comment. Perhaps, perhaps it's kind of been our tradition, or do we go to council questions?
Yes, there's an opportunity for public comment, it looks like.
Thank you. Crystal, is anybody interested in making a public comment?
No, I don't see any tonight.
All right, thank you. Adam?
Mayor, I had two questions. And one, in terms of mask compliance, Jeff, I know there's been some, some good mask compliance, but I've noticed maybe with some of the construction workers, maybe sort of less than ideal compliance. Is there a way that we can sort of, sort of reinforce that or sort of just get something around to sort of remind people about mask compliance in those situations?
Yeah, we can ask our building department to send a letter out to work sites reminding folks of the requirements.
That would be great. Thanks. And then my second question is, I don't know if we've thought about this, but I've noticed that some of the other communities are having sort of, you know, once a week or an occasional day where they're hosting COVID testing. I think Burlingame's doing it, Hillsborough, some other ones. Is that something that we have thought about or something we can look into for our residents to have an opportunity to maybe have a mobile testing site here once a week or once every couple of weeks?
I'll ask Tara to make sure that that's passed on to the county. I think, I think we have indicated in the past that you know, we'd be willing to, to take a look if, if they felt like there was a need in our area to do that that we'd, we'd be willing to coordinate. So we'll just make sure that that information is passed on to the county.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had one, a couple of questions. Jeff, I thought I heard on the county elected call last week, something about the event center no longer be being available for testing. Did I mishear that?
I've not heard that. I'll ask Tara if she heard anything in one of the recent calls.
I did not hear that, Ron. I understand they're going to be doing both vaccines and testing at the site.
Okay, no, that's good. I was, I was concerned that I had maybe misheard it, but I wanted to clarify that. The other question I have is, now that vaccines are beginning to become available, do we know whether or not people who are getting tested is increasing, decreasing, unchanged? Is it having, is the availability of the vaccines having any effect on people choosing to get tested that you're aware of?
My understanding is yes. More and more people are getting tested because it's spreading around all over. So there is definitely higher demand out there than, than ever before.
And do we know, I guess maybe this, this seminar, this live event on Wednesday is going to tell us how many doses there are and what the expected wait time might be?
It's possible. I know that they're going to be start putting out vaccines as quickly as possible. So those numbers might be moving. You know, as soon as they're speaking about it, they might be changing. But I'm hoping that it will be pretty comprehensive and give people a real sense of what, what is happening in our county.
Great. Yeah, I'll, I'll, once it's available, I'm in group one B, so as soon as it's available, I'm going to be in line.
Rub it in.
The one-time youth doesn't have the advantage.
Right. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. And I, any other questions from council? All right.
Thank you very much.
All right. Okay, thank you. All right. So next item is the public hearing with respect to the ordinance on San Carlos Municipal Code Title Five. I think we'll take a presentation from Andrea.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Andrea Martin, Principal Planner. Tonight, we will be presenting proposed changes to various municipal code sections with regard to both in-home and commercial childcare centers. I'll begin with a brief background, discuss the proposed municipal code changes, and then conclude with some upcoming actions regarding childcare in general. I wanted to start with an understanding of what the need is for childcare within the city. This is information that you probably remember from past presentations, which outlines the, it's an analysis of supply and demand for childcare within San Carlos. Now, this data is from October twenty nineteen. Based on this analysis, at the time, there was a need for one thousand one hundred and sixty-seven childcare, excuse me, preschool spaces and two hundred and forty-seven infant spaces. At the time, there were eight hundred and ten spaces for childcare, which resulted in a shortage of about six hundred spaces. As you'll notice, the study was done over a year ago, so we do not yet have data on the most current numbers. But based on information we've received from the county, we're anticipating an updated countywide needs assessment in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. There are two types of childcare categories. The first are in-home facilities, of which there were nineteen in San Carlos. They're not shown on this map because we're not allowed to publicize their location. The ones that are on the map are the nineteen commercial childcare centers, which include daycare centers, school-age daycare centers, which are the centers that are located at the various public schools, as well as infant centers. I would like to discuss a brief timeline of how we've arrived at the proposed changes this evening. In late twenty seventeen, council heard from community stakeholders that access to childcare was increasingly a concern for a variety of reasons. At that time, council directed city staff to explore options to address the issue. Staff retained EPS, a consultant, to assist with establishing preliminary options and strategies to increase childcare facilities within the city. In twenty nineteen, council reprioritized childcare and directed staff to continue studying the topic. Staff met with key stakeholders. These included the school district, which identified a surplus of land, but a shortage of cash, but noted that they were open to potential opportunities for partnerships. Staff also met La San Mateo County, who indicated they could work collaboratively with the city to provide insight into efforts undertaken by other local agencies and to assist with any linkages among stakeholders, or excuse me, among providers. Throughout this process, the City Council Subcommittee has also met several times with staff. And in July twenty twenty, the City Council approved an expedited review process for childcare. Most recently, on December twentieth of this past year, the Planning Commission recommended approval of changes to the municipal code regarding childcare. And those are the ones I will be going through this evening. Before we start those, I also wanted to talk about the short-term actions, which were identified as the quicker actions that the city could undertake that have already been completed or are under review. The first is a, the City Council waived the Traffic Impact Fee, or TIF, for all commercial childcare centers in twenty nineteen. In July of twenty twenty, the City Council approved various logistical changes, such as streamlining the internal review process, which included a reduced timeframe, standard conditions of approval, and a designated staff person for childcare inquiries and outreach. An exas study for a possible impact fee was also completed. And staff met with the Childcare Law Center to discuss proposed minor municipal code changes for this evening to receive input as well as discuss possible substantial changes in the future. And then this evening, staff will be going through the minor code changes that are proposed. Now, I'd like to provide a brief overview of the municipal code changes that are proposed this evening. There are essentially two categories of changes. The first are those changes proposed by state law, which affect small and large in-home daycare. These include allowing in-home daycares in any zoning district where residential uses are permitted, removing the requirement for in-home daycares to have a business registration, and prohibiting any kind of discretionary review. The second category of proposed changes are those that staff and the Planning Commission are recommending for commercial childcare centers, which include permitting them by right in districts where they are currently conditionally permitted, new processes for parking and circulation, and changes to the overall use standards. And I will be going through each category of these changes. The in-home, small and large care facilities, I wanted to just define those to start with. The small family childcare in-home facilities can have up to eight spaces for childcare and are currently right in our municipal code. The large family childcare allows up to fourteen spaces for childcare, and, and per our current code does require a use permit. However, as I mentioned, the, the new laws require us to allow those by right. S B two thirty-four also preempts the city from requiring a business registration or imposing the minor use permit. Other changes that will affect in-home childcare facilities are a change to Municipal Code Section five oh four, which regulates business registration requirements and fees, excuse me. Staff is proposing to update that to exempt both small and large in-home childcare facilities from business registration requirements. And then another change is the in-home childcare facilities, as I mentioned, must be permitted by right in any zoning district that allows a residential use. So changes throughout the zoning title, which is Chapter eighteen, reflect updates to these requirements. Now, I'd like to move to the recommended changes for commercial childcare centers. These are changes that are not required by law, but that are being recommended to remove barriers to the creation of more childcare spaces. All of these recommended changes refer specifically to, to commercial childcare. These proposed changes include allowing childcare centers by right in areas where they're already conditionally permitted, which would remove either the minor use permit or conditional use permit process. This one, this would in effect remove the public hearing requirement for these proposed centers. Another group of proposed changes for commercial childcare centers has to do with use standards. Chapter eighteen point two-three of the Municipal Code outlines specific use standards for a variety of uses within the cities. One of the uses that has additional standards by which it must abide is commercial childcare. Staff is proposing several changes to these standards. The first includes removing the requirement for outdoor space, as this is already regulated by the state. The second is to allow the allowable hours of operation from six AM to ten PM every day, with additional hours permitted upon approval of a minor use permit. Staff is also proposing a new process for a parking exception, as well as the ability of the Community Development Director to review, to refer circulation issues to the zoning administrator in the form of a minor use permit requirement. However, under these new guidelines, if a commercial center, commercial daycare center met these requirements, as outlined in the use standards, and there were no constraints with circulation, the daycare center could be approved at staff level. On December twenty-first, twenty twenty, the Planning Commission adopted Resolution twenty twenty oh five, recommending the City Council adopt an ordinance, updating several sections of the zoning title of the Municipal Code to help increase the number of childcare facilities and spaces within the city. I did want to note the Planning Commission did not make a recommendation on Chapter five of the Municipal Code, which is the business registration section, as their authority to recommend changes to the code is limited to the zoning title. In terms of next steps, if the City Council chooses to introduce the ordinance this evening, the second reading would occur on January twenty-fifth. And then finally, I wanted to end the presentation with a preview of some future actions we're anticipating working on within the next year. In terms of potential future items, we're anticipating returning with several items, which include studying the possibility of allowing commercial childcare centers in zoning districts where it's not currently allowed, such as the GCI, or General Commercial Industrial District, studying the feasibility of an impact fee based on the nexus. studying the feasibility of an impact fee based on the nexus study that has already been completed, waiving fees for applications, and reevaluating waiving of the transportation impact fee, proposal of a general plan policy, and then, of course, development agreements as, as they come through, and also as part of the Eastside Vision Plan that is underway. Staff also anticipates an outreach campaign, which includes a specific childcare website, information nights for providers, a pamphlet as a startup guide for operators, as well as a possible spotlight newsletter. And with that, I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Andrea. Very nice presentation. Before we get to council questions, Crystal, is there anyone wishing to, from the public wishing to make a comment?
No, I'm not seeing any hands raised.
Okay, thank you. All right, and Greg, I have in my procedures that we need a motion to close the public hearing. Is that correct, or do we go straight to council questions?
We, we close the, we, we go to, you can do it either way. You can go to council questions before you close, or you can close the public hearing or take your public question.
All right, let's, let's go ahead and.
Through the chair, it looks like we do have a, a public, member of the public raising their hand at this moment.
Okay, thank you.
Sonia Elks, you should be able to unmute yourself. There you go.
Yeah, I would love to come in, but I want to hear the council question first to make sure I don't ask something dumb that maybe I misunderstood. Can I go first?
Yes, we'll come back to you, Sonia. Thank you. All right, and with our new system, I wasn't, I was not able to see who raised their hands first, whether it was council member Collins or McDowell. So whoever would like to go first?
Go ahead, Sarah.
Iran, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have two questions. Thank you, Andrea, for the great presentation. I really appreciate all of the work that you've done, and I'm all for removing barriers to increasing our childcare capacity in San Carlos. My question is, what would the public review process be like? Or how would the public voice concerns about parking or circulation if we remove the public hearing process under the minor use permit?
Thank you, Councilmember McDowell. So if we remove the requirement, there would not be a mechanism by which the public could comment. However, staff would be requiring review of both a parking plan and circulation plan. And so if there were any concerns with that, staff would refer the item to the zoning administrator, which is a public hearing, and then the public would have the opportunity to comment on it.
Okay, very good. Thank you. My second question is, I see that we're amending the hours of operation for daycare centers, or we're not considering amending the hours for family home childcare providers?
That's correct, and the reason for that is that we, the city now has really no regulations over in-home providers in terms of their hours of operation. They're completely regulated by the state. So we would not be able to limit them or not limit them even if we, we wanted to.
Okay, I understand. Perfect. Thank you. And then I just had one comment. If we could, you know, after our vote tonight, could we notice the childcare providers in town, just to let them know that, you know, these changes have been made? Is there kind of a communication outreach component?
Absolutely. We have a list of the, the providers we're aware of and can definitely notice them. One of the, the bigger challenges within home daycare is now that we cannot require a business registration, there might be some that we're, we're not aware of. So we can also reach out to the county coordinating council and see if we can get their help in reaching out to the ones we're not aware of.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Nice presentation, Andrea. Very thorough. I just had a question on the, well, two questions. One on the minor use permit, if, if there isn't really a hearing, is there some sort of notification perimeter that you're requiring so that neighbors know if, you know, there's going to be a, a in-home childcare center coming?
For an in-home childcare center, there's not, because we would have, the city doesn't require them to register with us. So we would not know if they're coming or not.
Okay, all right. And then my other question was, have you found that there have been potential childcare centers that have expressed difficulty in overcoming some of our previous barriers? Have we lost some that, had we had these new set of requirements in place, might have, might have located here? I mean, I don't know how you would know that, but I'm just wondering if you have any anecdotal information on it.
I do. Definitely with, well, one that's not really applicable anymore, but at the time, we were aware of a few small in-home daycare centers that did not want to become large in-home because of the public hearing process. Now, however, that, that won't apply anymore. But for commercial centers, we've had a few inquiries where either the time of the, the review process and public hearing was an issue, because they would have had to enter into a lease with a landlord without knowing if they were going to be allowed or not. That was one issue. And then another issue was just finding locations where they could operate, regardless of whether a use permit was, was allowed or not.
So it sounds like this will be a big improvement.
I believe so. I believe so.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Collins. Councilmember Rack?
Thank you, Mayor Palmer Lohan. I just had a couple of questions, and I'm assuming we're saving comments for later. Is that correct?
Yeah, we'll go, we'll take public comment and then call for a motion and then do discussion and comments.
Okay, perfect. I will just stick to questions for now then. So Andrea, thanks for the great presentation. Can you tell me, so I know in the hours you mentioned that we have no control over the in-home. Do you know what the hours are that are permitted by the state?
I do not. That's something I can definitely find out and get back to you on.
I'm just curious if we're, we're proposing to match those or different. And that, so that would be one question. And you mentioned about the sort of not knowing, not being, if you don't have the registration issue, are there things that the, the county has asked? I mean, how do we know, like, if there's a health or safety issue that there is, you know, there's the fire department, police department know that this is, is sort of an in-home daycare?
Yeah, so there's, there's a few things. As part of the state requirements, they do have to do inspections with fire. And county is also aware of their existence, as well as any complaints or issues that might come up. One thing that the city would see, however, is if an in-home daycare was doing some sort of structural or improvements or something that required a permit. And at that point, we would be doing inspections and checking for safety. But our, our biggest resource, I think, will be the county and the coordinating council for childcare in terms of knowing how many we have, where they are, and any concerns that might come up.
Okay, and then I try to keep this brief and moving on things. But so in terms of the conditional use permit, what is the normal timeframe that that takes? I mean, how much time are we talking about potentially saving for them, for the commercial daycare centers?
So for conditional, what, minor use permit or conditional use, use permit, I would say at least three months would probably be the quickest. With those, with public hearings, we route the applications to all the reviewing departments. We review their plans, and of course, there's, there could be changes and need to reroute them. We have the noticing to the public, you know, 10 days ahead, and then also publishing in the paper. So all of that, you know, steps out the hearing date itself quite a bit.
Okay, and in terms of those conditional use permits, do we, I forget where we are on fees around that. Do we, we, do we waive the fees for conditional use permit, or currently, like, right now, if they went through the process, is, is there a fee associated with that?
There is. So the fee for use permits are about thirty-three hundred, up to seven thousand, just depending on, on what kind of use permit it is. We did, we did previously discuss the idea of leaving fees, but still going through the process. And what was the discussed was grouping that together with the discussion on the traffic impact fee, and deciding whether, you know, the city council would like to waive fees, and if there are certain conditions they'd like to attach to that, such as, you know, reserved childcare spaces or spaces for lower-income families. So the discussion on the waiver of fees was deferred until we come back with, you know, get to action on coming back with that and the TIF.
Okay, and then, and my last question quickly I will ask is, in, in terms of the, so if we implement this, I mean, we could, in, as part of the ordinance, or we can just request that staff come back in a year just to give us an update on whether, you know, there's been, it's had an impact, and whether we want to sort of review again at that point.
Yes.
Great. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Rack. Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, thank you. Hi, Andrea. Yeah, just a question. So very striking, 604 slots of childcare were short as of 2019. Anecdotally aware, you know, there's a lot of COVID impacts going on in childcare right now. Is there any study underway? Do we have any collection of data right now, maybe county level, to indicate where we might be at now?
No, we don't, and we did reach out to them to try to find out if they have any additional information or when we'll be receiving it. And they said they're planning on updating the supply and demand analysis in the next fiscal year.
Okay, so at some point this year, we'll see an update to that current shortage level?
Right, and, and we probably, next time we come back with, with something else childcare-related, we probably could see if they have any anecdotal information that we could pass on about what they're seeing as well.
Okay, yeah, I would just be very interested in anything, you know, we can learn ahead of time, because, you know, we came, we're coming in with a major shortage and, and it's probably not any better, right? So the, and, and do we know, have we lost, like, I, I saw the, the 19 and 19 census of current facilities, have we lost any in the past nine months or so?
Not that I'm aware of, other than ones that are, you know, temporarily closed because of COVID. I did speak with the owner of the newest commercial daycare center, which is, I believe it's on the 1600 block of Laurel, so South Laurel. And it, it was a few months ago, and he was having asked, he said the thing that would help him most is the city being able to get his name and, you know, contact information out there as a resource, because COVID was, was, you know, wreaking havoc on his, on his business at the time, understandably so. Yeah.
Yeah, I can understand. Okay. So I, that, that was news to me, that we make a distinction between small and large family home that has hadn't bumped into that before. What, what drives that? Is that just a, an application process? And it's traditionally been more complicated to get registered as a large? Or is that actually based on, like, square footage of, of the residents or something like that?
It's based on the number of children. So eight children or less would be considered a small, and up to 14 children would be considered a large. In terms of our review process, they were two separate processes, either allowed by right for small or a minor use permit for large. And we found that the ones that did go through the minor use permit process had a pretty difficult time because of neighbor concerns with parking and noise. And, and I think that was recognized at the state level as well, which is why they, they kind of took it out of, out of city's hands to be able to regulate that. So as of now, the, the main distinction is the, the amount of children that, that they're allowed to have.
Okay, so is there any reason, I mean, if, if anyone's starting a daycare center in a home, they should just say they're large to allow them to grow. Is that correct, or is there?
Yeah, the, the one thing that, that could be difficult is there's an outdoor space requirement, which is regulated by the state. And so you have to provide, I believe it's 75 square feet per child. So you'd have to have that much space in, in order to be a large. And you, I believe you also need to have more employees as well.
I see. Okay, so they start to think through that. Got it. And the, and I noticed, it sounds like as you went through this, there are some remaining opportunities we can continue to explore. You know, personally, I like, you know, I, I don't see any reason why we couldn't have childcare in our GCI district personally. And it sounds like you guys want to study that a bit more. But were, were there any particular reasons why we didn't bring all those items forward tonight? Just more studies required, or what, what was delaying us on that?
Yeah, so we, we'd been basically splitting the childcare initiatives or ideas into kind of two categories of short-term versus long-term. And the idea of allowing childcare centers in, in other zoning districts, we felt was a pretty significant change that would require additional study. One of the things that, that need to be considered is the idea of children being what are called sensitive receptors. So meaning, meaning, you know, as an elderly are also considered a sensitive receptor, which basically means that a use that has children shouldn't be near an industrial site, for example, because of pollution and things like that. So knowing that some of these GCI sites, for example, are near industrial, it's something that we would want to study pretty comprehensively to make sure everyone's comfortable with the locations and, and what's allowed there. And so that, that's one of the main reasons that we, we decided to kind of save it for the larger conversation.
Yeah, I got it. We certainly want to take a good look at that. But, you know, there's certainly plenty of areas over there with that zoning that I think it would work, so, you know. Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dugan. Crystal, any members of the public wishing to speak? Is Sonia still with us?
Yes, looks like she is ready to speak now. Sonia, you should be able to unmute. There you go.
Yeah, thank you, Crystal. So quick question, why wouldn't business, why wouldn't daycare be required to register their businesses? And just waive the fee? I guess I'm confused about why there's a lack of registration that you would, seems like you would want to know about them and have these numbers at your fingertips, but you just wouldn't charge them the fee? Isn't it just a little bit of paperwork? And then the second is a comment, and this is just, when you mentioned, Andrew, when you mentioned more permanent, longer-term childcare vision type things, I, I just wanted to put out there that I, I think one of the big things, having four kids, one of the big things that would have made an enormous difference for me is some kind of public-private partnership, large childcare center, that, that allowed kind of a more temporary, a parent to drop off. A parent in crisis, a parent who has something come up, a parent who is exhausted and just needs to go somewhere and nap. More like a, you know, where the share economy idea of the childcare providers, the people who want to be childcare providers in our community, but maybe aren't ready to commit to, like, 24/7 of, well, not 24/7, but like, non-stop availability. When you have eight, responsibility for eight children, they can't be sick, and they can't, nothing bad can happen because they have to be there. I just think there might be a way, long-term, to think about a childcare facility that's public-private partnership that, that is a little bit more flexible, and people sign up and to, 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 they're staffed by nurses, staffed by, you know, people in the community who want to help, who want to be around children, who are, you know, background checked, et cetera. And then there's this availability to the community for this. You don't have to have a childcare daycare provider for every day of the week. Sometimes it's just two days a week, and sometimes it's different days of the week. And sometimes you just need to spend time with one child because he really needs it, and you need, or you're exhausted and the baby. So anyway, some kind of flexibility, larger scale, where we kind of bring all these people together who want to do this, but it's a lot to commit to a childcare in your home idea. So those are my two comments. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Sonia. Appreciate that. So it, it sounds like Sonia's providing us with some suggestions on what type of programming that we might offer. And then Andrea, it sounds as if she also had a question with respect, respect to the regulations. So could you address that at this time?
Sure. So the mechanism by which we review zoning clearances and decide if a business is allowed and/or is even located within the city is through that business registration process. The new state law has basically prohibited cities from requiring anything from, from childcare providers. So we wouldn't have a way officially to track it. I can do some more research and see if there's a way that we could, you know, make note of them. But my understanding is that we're not allowed to really even ask. But I can definitely look into that a little bit more and see if there, there's some other mechanism so we can track them.
Great. Thank you, Andrea. All right, any other members of the public wishing to address the council? Crystal?
No, I'm not seeing any hands. No, I'm not seeing any hands.
All right, thank you. All right, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right. Well, it's it's very clear that my colleague Sherman believes that this is a very important issue for us to address based on engagement and previous conversations. So I'm glad that we're discussing this tonight. So with that, I guess we now need to move to a motion so we can open up comment and discussion.
Looks like I have a motion a second to close the public hearing, so I'll need to do the roll call for that.
I'm like, see, I'm so excited. I'll be right ahead.
No problem.
All right, so if you can do roll call, please.
Okay, Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Palmer Law, Vice Mayor McDowell, have it. Vice Mayor McDowell.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
And Mayor Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
All right. I'm sorry, Greg.
Now the now the motion.
All right, now entertain a motion.
I move to introduce ordinance number.
Fifteen sixty eight.
Fifteen sixty eight in ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, amending San Carlos Municipal Code Title Five Business Taxes, Licenses, and Registrations. And Title eighteen zoning ordinance to update specific sections pertaining to regulations relating to childcare facilities and to comply with state law requirements.
Second.
Thank you. So comments, discussion from members of council? All right, Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, sure. I'll just say I'm glad we're taking these steps this evening. Childcare is critical in San Carlos. We have a significant shortage. We don't even know how much trouble this industry is in due to COVID. So anything we can do to help. And and we're taking a good step this evening. So fully support it.
Thank you. Councilmember Rack?
Thank you, Mayor Palmer Lohan. I guess just a point of clarification on this too. So I guess. I had a couple of sort of comments and sort of. Concerns about sort of what we're doing and so, but it sounds like we're sort of past that point since we've already made the motion. Is that right? You can't change the ordinance right now or recommendations to staff?
No, you I mean, at at this point, this this part of the process would allow you, if you wanted to make changes to the proposed. Introduction of the ordinance, you could propose some changes. That when we bring it back for the second reading would be incorporated.
Okay, well, let me just I'll just express my kind of. Two concerns that I have. I mean, I'm I certainly support what we're doing here and want to see this in place. I guess I'd like to understand a little bit more before approving the hours. About how that matches up with the state and and understand. I guess I'm a little concerned that we're sort of allowing. You know, hours till ten P M. At night, that's sort of more minor for me. I'm a little more concerned about the. I'm happy to sort of waive the fees on the conditional use permit. I'm a little concerned as it ties into the zoning, the zoning changes we're potentially looking at. For GCI because I am concerned we've got places with industrial waste. We've got things that are unhealthy and I'm worried that if we approve these, that remove the conditional use permits now, we're setting ourselves up. For some potential issues. For a later discussion. And so I I think they're more appropriate to be tied together with the zoning changes. To understand that we do that correctly. So that's just my concern about that. I'm happy. I think if we wanted to waive the fees on it, I totally supportive of that. I just have a concern about tying that together with the potential that we're not tying it with these potential zoning changes, which may present. Issues for us later on. From a health and safety perspective. But those are my kind of that and I would wish that we could kind of look at those. At least that piece together, the hours I'm less concerned about from a, you know, make or break thing for me.
Thank you, Councilmember Rack. So is that something that Greg or is it appropriate for Greg or Al to comment on that?
Well, I I thought the I thought we were not making any. Changes to the GCI with these changes.
But we're we're talking about doing it at another meeting.
Yes, right.
And if we waive the conditional use permit now, then we waived it for GCI if we make zoning changes to allow it in GCI. So it seems like we're sort of should be doing the GCI piece first. And then doing the conditional use if we feel comfortable with the zones in the GCI. I I feel like we're doing this backwards on this piece. That we should be doing the the zoning change first and then the conditional use permit. Changes. Provided we're comfortable with the zoning changes.
So could I could I just ask a clarifying question? So when I read this, I was looking at it to mean. More or less the in-home daycare, which. Would not necessarily be in some of the other areas of the city unless I misunderstood.
Through the chair, I can respond to the to the zoning district specifically. So for the commercial childcare districts where we're proposing to remove any use permit requirement. It would be in the RM fifty nine, which is multifamily residential, high density or medium to high density. As well as all of the mixed use districts. I'm sorry, all of the mixed use districts except downtown where it's prohibited. And commercial daycare would remain prohibited in industrial districts and the GCI districts as well. So if in the future, the council decided to allow daycare within the GCI or commercial daycare. It could be as permitted outright. It could be a minor use permit. It could be a conditional use permit at that time. But as of now, these changes will will not make any difference to the GCI. It will still be prohibited there under these changes.
I guess I'm concerned that we're sort of the potential have the potential be inconsistent around our policy with this, if that's the case.
Well, some of what's driving this, Councilmember Rack, is that the state standard for small daycares, at which we're lifting a lot of those requirements and for the the. Large daycares. And then the the state's not regulating in the commercial areas that city they just trying, they're trying to encourage daycares where. In residential areas.
I I understand that. I'm not I'm not questioning the state. The state is done by right. So we don't, we're not doing anything other than approving what the state. Aligning our current ordinances with and code with. State laws. I think what I'm talking about, the only changes we're talking about with regard to. Conditional use that I'm concerned about is on the commercial side because we're not talking, we're not going to put. In-home daycare in a commercial facility area in a GCI area because there's not homes there. So I mean, that's the area I'm concerned about is that we're going to make changes to potentially zone, throwing changes to the GCI area and then we'll have already done. Commercial, we're done, we'll do those these conditional use changes. And we're sort of now putting ourselves in a position where. We've we've made changes to conditional use for commercial and then we're going to have, we're going to sort of create two different standards potentially if we saying that you can't. Need a conditional use permit in GCI. So I don't know that we're really helping matters. Until we can kind of study that issue. I just think we're we're sort of putting the cart before the horse on the conditional use permits. On the for commercial facilities. I have no issue with the other ones because it's right by the state. But my colleagues may disagree. I'm fine with that, too.
Well, the process to to make that change since we have a motion and second would be to propose a competing motion. If that's if there's something you would like to do, but I think if I'm understanding, the concern is about. We're not changing the commercial zoning.
Correct.
Yes, and you'll have total flexibility when that comes back. To impose a use permit standard. You just, we just don't have that in certain areas, so.
Madam Mayor, can I briefly respond to Adam?
Yes, go. Yes, Councilmember Collins, please.
You know, to me, this is a separate issue. I mean, the the we can make changes to the commercial area when we need to make changes. This is a, to me, this is an incremental thing and they're separate issues. It's already prohibited over there. That's a separate issue that we can explore whenever we want. And I don't think we ought to sacrifice what we're doing now. For something that we want to look at or that we will look at eventually. I think we just, let's let's get this done. Assuming that we're going to vote for it or let's let's decide on this issue. We can take up the other issue later because we do have a motion on the floor. I think we need to focus on this right now.
I I appreciate that, Ron. I think that's that's helpful clarification. I guess my one question would be to. If I could request, and I think this does need to be part of the motion, that we could have staff come back in a in a year and just at least update us on where. How this process is going and if there are issues from the community with regard to the conditional use permits for the R and M U zones and. If people are comfortable with that, I don't think that needs to be part of the ordinance, just a request at the staff level to make sure we haven't. We're not having issues or concerns that we want to address. So if that's the case, I'm I'm happy to support and we'll take the second issue separately.
Great.
And when we come to the GCI zoning.
All right. Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Rack. I appreciate that. Councilmember McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to chime in that I I agree with Ron. I think that the review process has been kind of cumbersome, as Andrea alluded to, for some. Daycare centers and I'd like to try and. You know, speed that process along and and, you know, remove barriers. So. I also wanted to just address the potential future actions part of Andrea's presentation and just say that. I'm I'm very much in favor of of continuing the work and the studying and the outreach campaign looks fantastic and. I appreciate that we've tackled the short term and I'm I'm very ready and willing to look at the long term issues now too, so that we can. Continue to make forward progress on on childcare in San Carlos. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McDowell. Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, I was just going to chime in and Councilmember Rack, I certainly hear you on that and and I support your thought. That, you know, when it is time for us to look at the GCI zoning, if that does make sense after the the staff study. You know, I would certainly want to see a conditional use permit. We'd want to understand exactly where those are going and that and that they make sense. So. I hear your concern on that, but I do think we can likely address that when it comes back around and we're looking at the GCI zoning in particular. And I would fully support keeping the conditional use permit layer of review on any. Childcare in that part of town.
Thank you, Councilmember Dugan. Councilmember Collins, thank you for being patient.
No worries. I my only question is generally of staff. I think this is fairly well thought out, but my only question is, is there, are there any? Parts of it that, whether it's Andrea or Jeff or Bell, and, you know, feel free to respond. Any parts of it that concern you? Are we leaving ourselves open for some? For some issue down the road, some challenge that maybe, you know, we haven't thought of that you might have thought of? That's that's my only, really my only issue here is, you know, are we? Is there something that we may be doing that might be hard to undo down the road?
I can go ahead and answer that, Councilmember. I I don't see anything within this packet of changes that would constitute that. Potentially in some of the other things that we're looking at. That might be the case, but that's exactly the reason why we're gonna, you know, really study those issues to make sure that. The council is fully aware of, you know, any unintended consequences or. How all the various pieces will fit together and we can, you know, make informed choices moving forward with the rest of the agenda.
All right, thank you. And with that, I'm happy to support it.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Collins. So it doesn't look like there's any additional hands up. So from my perspective, I again, just want to. Thank everybody for for bringing this to the fore and having these discussions. I think to Councilmember Dugan's earlier point, the pandemic has definitely shown a bright light on the brittle infrastructure and lack of available quality childcare. Unfortunately, this reality has disproportionately impacted women and especially women of color. The Business Insider reports that two point one million fewer women were working last month than there were in February, right before the pandemic. So I'm absolutely in favor of making adjustments to sections of our municipal code to help working parents. I'm aligned with the time savings associated with removing the minor use permits. And coming into compliance with state requirements on on outdoor space as well as extending the hours of. Of the daycare simply because, you know, people work at all different times of day and if we can provide them. With additional support by the to the tune of additional two hours a day, I'm I'm very comfortable with that. I'm also open to making sure that any future adjustments that we make make sense. So with that, I will be supporting this effort as we move forward this evening. All right, so Crystal, you want to, can you take the roll call, please?
Happy to. Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And Mayor Palmer Lohan?
Yes. All right, thank you. All right, how are you doing on time? So it's quarter after eight. So new business, we've got consideration of introducing an ordinance adding chapter two point three six oh three zero electronic filing system to the San Carlos Municipal Code. Approving electronic and paper methods of filing campaign finance disclosure statements. And it looks like we'll be taking a presentation from City Clerk Crystal Louie this evening.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Palmer Lohan and Councilmembers. Crystal Mo, your city clerk. I'm pleased to present this item to you tonight. My office has been working on implementing a system to accept electronic filings. Of Fair Political Practices Commission documents, such as the Statement of Economic Interests. As well as campaign statements for disclosing contributions to local candidates and ballot measure campaign committees. Electronic filing makes it easier for our officials to comply with reporting obligations. And also provides the public with the information in a more accessible and consistent format. On January first of this year, Assembly Bill twenty one fifty one went into effect and requires that we post specified. Campaign statements on our website within seventy two hours of receiving those filings. So this electronic system will greatly help with reducing the the labor of complying with the bill. For the city to use and accept an electronic campaign filing system, the City Council must adopt an ordinance which requires findings approved. With required findings approving the use of an electronic system and those. Are include that the system will operate securely and effectively and will not unduly burden filers. The system must also be available free of charge to filers and the public for viewing filings. And also must include a procedure for filers to comply with the requirement that they sign statements and reports under penalty of perjury. So the ordinance before you tonight includes those required findings. Staff is recommending that you introduce the ordinance tonight. And then we could bring it back for the second reading at the next meeting for adoption. So that concludes my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Crystal. Are there any questions for Crystal from the council? All right, Crystal, are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this item?
Take a look. I don't see any hands.
All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to introduce ordinance number.
Fifteen sixty nine.
Fifteen sixty nine in ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos adding chapter two point three six point zero three zero. Dash electronic filing system to the San Carlos Municipal Code approving electronic and paper methods of filing campaign finance disclosure statements.
All right, is anybody care to second the motion?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Discussion and comment. I saw Councilmember Collins, your hand go up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, my only comment is I'm going to support this. I wish it was in place nine years ago. It would make things a lot easier. So happy to support.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Dugan.
Yeah, basically I have the same comment. I suppose I was going to say six months ago. I'm driving a lot of signatures around town and, you know, my treasure chasing me down. This is, we'll be a good system and we'll make the whole process work better. So fully support it.
Thank you. All right, any other comments?
Raise my hand. I just want to thank Crystal for her work on this too. Thank you for getting this in place and happy to support.
I'm very excited about this as well.
Thank you. Great. All right. All right. If you could call a roll, Crystal? Assuming you don't have a conflict of interest here, right?
No. Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And Mayor Parma Lohan?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay, so this next item, under new business, item 8B, is consideration of appointments to the city council subcommittees and ad hoc committees for 2021. We'll be taking a presentation from Jeff Maltby, and then I have a few remarks before we get into the discussion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This particular item is an annual item for our first meeting in January typically, where the council reorganizes their committee and regional assignments. The mayor, under our Code of Conduct and Ethics, makes recommendations to the council about how that works. We received, the staff did, the input from each council member that we put into a spreadsheet indicating preference and availability and whatnot on various committees that was provided to the mayor, so she could begin to work on that, as is the case typically every year with our ad hoc subcommittees. There were a number of committees we listed in the staff report that we were recommending eliminating, either because we didn't anticipate there being enough work to justify a subcommittee. There might be a few items in that area coming forward that could just come directly to a commission or the city council, depending on what they are. And then we had a number of subcommittees that were related to specific development sites that were creating some difficulties under the Brown Act. We were having to make sure that we weren't taking certain items to multiple subcommittees, even though their jurisdiction suggested that they, they might actually go to those subcommittees because of the membership would have created an overlap that would have potentially created a Brown Act violation. We worked hard to make sure that that wasn't the case last year, but I think based on the feedback we got from a number of council members throughout the year, it was sort of increasingly recognized that that might not be the best approach moving forward. So rather, we have three separate subcommittees now that are more of a geographical area that will deal with development, economic development. There's the Industrial Arts Subcommittee that will really encompass all of economic development within that area. We have the Downtown Subcommittee that will have the same type of jurisdiction within the downtown, and then we have the Economic Subcommittee that will cover the rest of the community in terms of development. And then, in regards to housing, that will be covered citywide by one subcommittee. So those are the major changes to the subcommittee format for the coming year that we've been recommending. We provided that information to the mayor, who concurred in her recommendation, and then she took the feedback and the current assignments and current vacancies, and sort of ran that through her own philosophy, which I'll hand it back to the mayor to speak to a little bit about how she arrived at the recommendation she did in terms of committee assignments.
Great. All right. Thank you, Jeff. So first off, I want to thank everybody for your willingness to step up and into these important regional and council committee roles. It's a testament to your care and concern for not only San Carlos, but the broader community. As you can imagine, working through these assignments is very complex, as there are many variables. I work closely with staff, taking your committee preferences into consideration, in addition to leveraging experience with said assignment, you know, trying to determine and ensure that there was a balanced workload with respect to not only the lead and alternate positions, but also the nature of the assignment, as well as distribution of collaboration among council members. And then finally, my goal was to optimize your satisfaction and minimize your dissatisfaction with the assignments. So with that, in a few minutes, I'll find out how we did. So at this point, if there's anybody who wishes to make public comment on this item, Crystal?
I don't see any hands raised from the public.
Okay, all right. So with that, Councilmember Collins, it looks like you have a question? You're on mute.
I don't have a question. I have a comment. Do you want me to wait until we vote on it?
Let's see if there's any, well, let's maybe take questions first. Councilmember Rack, did you have a question?
I'm just going to make my comment, which is, I'm just glad that John gets to experience the airport noise roundtable. Important committee for him to sort of get his feet wet. So thank you, Madam Mayor, for making that wise decision.
All right. Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, sure. I'll just chime in. The, happy to pick that up. I will say, I think that was at the very, very bottom of my list, but on a whole, I'm not disappointed. What a thankless job, Madam Mayor, you know, at least from my perspective. Several of my high priorities were well represented, which has exceeded my expectation as the new guy here. So I'm generally satisfied, and I don't mind showing up at the airport roundtable for one year. The requirement is two years, so, you know, you got to wait till the next election.
Duly noted. All right. All right. Well, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll move to approve the mayor's recommended addition and elimination of proposed appointments for city council members to select boards, committee, and authorities.
Second.
Great, thank you. Discussion or comments? Councilmember Collins?
Yeah, the only comment that I wanted to make was, I thank staff, and as your probably, maybe your first official executive action decision as mayor, I am, at least from where I sit, I think you hit a home run. So great work.
Thank you. Councilmember Rack?
I just wanted to echo Councilmember Collins' remarks, and thank both staff and you, Mayor Parma Lohan, for a nice job.
Thank you. Councilmember McDowell?
Thank you. I, too, wanted to just echo the gratitude to staff and to you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to say that I like the new organized system of subcommittees. I think it makes a lot of sense, and it certainly clarifies our areas of responsibility. So great work with that, too. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right. And I'd also like to thank staff. I know a lot of hours went into this, and really appreciate the time and attention to this important work. All right. I think with that, we can take a roll. Paul, Crystal?
Okay. Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
And Mayor Parma Lohan?
Yes. All right. Well, I just want to let you all know I had three pencils sharpened, ready to take notes on this matrix, so I'll just save those for another day. All right. With that, we'll move to council communications and announcements. Council communications and announcements are brief items for members of the city council regarding upcoming events in the committee and correspondence that they have received. They are informational in nature, and no action will be taken on these items at this meeting. So with that, council members' reports on subcommittees, regional boards, commissions, and committees. Anybody wish to speak?
I just had one question, Mayor. So previously, I think we had done the council, sort of the committee meetings earlier in the meeting. Is it your intention, and I don't have, I don't care, just, is this sort of the process moving forward, or is this just sort of a change for this meeting? And just more of a question of clarification.
I am flexible in terms of how we want to do it. So if there's a, if there's a preference that we bring them up earlier in the meeting, that's fine with me. Is there?
I don't, I don't have a strong opinion on it. I just, it's more, I think occasionally there's something that sort of, when more of the public is listening, we might, there might be something that we might want to say earlier on, so if it makes sense to have a slot. But I'm flexible, and I'm happy to sort of follow your lead on this.
Yes. All right. Councilmember Collins?
Yes, Madam Mayor, that's what I was going to say, exactly what Adam said, that I don't have a strong feeling. I leave it to your discretion.
Okay, all right. So I think I'm flexible as well. I'm sorry, it looks like somebody else was going to speak. Maybe it's just some feedback. So we can look at that. I'll talk to Jeff and as we move forward on agenda setting, to keep that in mind. Perhaps just because it was a little bit quiet, time of the year with the holidays, it made sense to move it towards the back. But as we get more into our regular scheduled programming, we can bring that up earlier in the agenda. Okay. So the only thing I wanted to report out was at the Council of Cities, there were a number of appointments made for regional bodies. I'm just going to highlight a few, and to let you all know that for the Association of Bay Area Government-appointed seats, Giselle Hale, Vice Mayor of Redwood City, and Carlos Romero, Mayor of East Palo Alto, were appointed to those seats. Vice Mayor of East Palo Alto, Ruben Abrica, was appointed to the Domestic Violence Council, and Jeff G., Councilmember of Redwood City, has been appointed to SAM Trans and Caltrain Board. So those were just a few that I wanted to highlight. And I see Councilmember Dugan has his hand up.
Yeah, as the brand-new member of the Housing Subcommittee, I just wanted to call out that San Carlos Housing 2040, which is our city's initiative on beginning the process of updating our housing element of our general plan. It kicked off late last year. Planning staff has been working very hard on this, and is inviting broad community outreach. And to that end, on January 20th, from 6:30 to 8:30, there is a virtual workshop to inform the public on what this process looks like, and to also gather input and lay out next steps. So I'll just call everyone's attention to that, and encourage everyone listening to this to participate in that important conversation.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Dugan. All right. Are there any items for agenda setting?
None for me.
All right. I just wanted to raise a topic for us to consider. So during the holiday season, I know many enjoyed the eucalyptus holiday lights, although this year I did receive abundant feedback from our neighbors about the impact of the eucalyptus street holiday lights. Trash, traffic, and at the top of the concerns were safety, some safety issues. I'd like to recommend that council convene a discussion on this topic, and I'd like all of us to work together towards improving conditions for the fall holiday season. And I am open to input on this particular item.
Madam Mayor, I appreciate you bringing this up. I, too, received a lot of feedback over the holidays, and I know that, you know, public safety is really important to all of us. So I would support the idea of figuring out some kind of a community engagement or dialogue, and I'm wondering if maybe the council could briefly discuss this at our upcoming retreat.
I'd be in favor of that.
I'd be in favor of that, too.
As would I. So, all right. Okay, and that's, and that was from Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Okay, terrific. Okay, well, we'll make sure that we do that. Thank you. Any comments from staff on city administrative business?
None this evening, Madam Mayor.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody, for the discussion this evening, and the meeting is now adjourned.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone. Have a good night.
Okay, bye.